Okay, Mayor, people are filtering into the meeting now.
Okay, great. All right, then let's get started here. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on October 1st, 2020, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on October 1st, 2020, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As Mayor, I preside over the council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Stephanie, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty
and justice for all. Thank you. Well, this is our 12th virtual council meeting. A recording of the proceedings will be made available via HPTV following the meeting. Today, I have a proclamation to bring attention to distracted driving awareness month.
Miss Roll Call.
Oh. Okay, thank you. Borough Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Mayor Burrell Mittler.
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Here.
Councilman Fine.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster. Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator over there.
Here.
Okay. So, as I mentioned, we want to bring awareness to distracted driving month. And I have a proclamation for that. Whereas more than 700 injury crashes involve distracted driving on an average day, and the economic toll of all motor vehicle crashes in the United States annually exceeds $400 billion. And whereas taking on a mobile, talking on a mobile phone, even in hands-free mode, texting, programming your dashboard information system or GPS device can divert your attention away from driving and result in physical or cognitive distraction. And whereas Highland Park, New Jersey residents and all Americans deserve to live in communities that promote safe driving behaviors and healthy lifestyles. And whereas preventing distracted driving injuries and deaths requires the cooperation of all levels of government, employers, and the general public. And whereas the National Safety Council works to promote policies, practices, and procedures leading to increased safety, protection, and health in business and industry, in schools and colleges, on roads and highways, and in homes and communities. And whereas the National Safety Council in 2020 will provide this nation with a month-long distracted driving public education program. And whereas spring is a time when people begin to log more miles on the road, and it is imperative to focus attention on motor vehicle injury risks and preventions. Now, therefore, I, Gail Burrell Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby proclaim support for distracted driving awareness month in October 2020, and strongly urge the citizens and businesses of Highland Park, New Jersey, to observe distracted driver awareness month, now marking its 10th anniversary, by practicing safe driving behaviors and pledging to drive distraction-free. We are a community with a state highway running right through the middle of our town. I find this extremely important for all of us to keep in mind. Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular work session meetings of June 23rd, 2020, and July 21st, 2020, as distributed?
Um. See you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Approve.
Councilman Fine.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go on to our council reports now. And again, I will ask each of you to give your reports. I'm looking at you, I'm going to call on you on the order in which you appear on my screen. And so Tara Canavera, can you please give us your report?
Um, because of the holidays, I was not able to get together with Ruth from the Mental Health Commission, but we are meeting tomorrow. And hopefully, we'll be getting some things off the ground in that area. That is the end.
It's particularly needed during these COVID times as we're hearing more and more cases of people feeling the needs of socialization and other things that they're not getting at home by themselves. So, thank.
Ruth has been very good about getting information out on resources. So, it's been very helpful for some residents.
Great. Thank you for participating in that. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. The Nets Flu Clinic at the Community Center will be Monday, October 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, hosted by our local Unite Pharmacy. As always, the pharmacy, as always, the clinics will be open to all residents and Borough staff members who wish to get the flu shot. Normally, we hold these clinics in one of the activity rooms. However, this year, the clinics will be held outdoors in the parking lot. Unite Pharmacy takes all insurance and accepts Medicare and Medicaid. They will be providing flu shots free of charge for those who do not have insurance. For more details can be found on our HP Borough Facebook page, or you can call the Community Center at 732-819-0052. I also, the Flu Pantry will be meeting tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. Details can be found on our HP Borough calendar as well. We're still meeting virtually. And also, on a person who know, most of you know, by day, I am a banker. So, I did want to mention this to our residents. So, I want to remind our residents that were approved for the SBA PPP loan, now is the time to start having conversations with your lender or bank about the forgiveness process. We've all, I've been thrown into this process, which is really not even my job. But now is the time, you don't want to be in that line trying to get your loan forgiven. Or who knows, the second wave come and your banker has gone MIT. And October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. The best protection is early detection, and that is my report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Fine, do you have a report?
No reports tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Council President, do you have a report?
I have a very brief report, if I may, Mayor. The DPW is going to be giving out leaf bags again this year, starting this coming Tuesday, the 13th. We will be practicing social distancing rather than coming into the lobby to pick up a couple packets of leaves. They'll ask from outside and they'll pass them out the window. Bulk trash, we're going to have bulk trash in October. Just one day, unfortunately, but the north side of the triangle will be collected on Tuesday, December 20th. And on the south side, Thursday, October 22nd. And again, if there is an overload or the trucks can't service for whatever reason, we will be continuing to pick up. I just wanted to congratulate Council.
Wait a second, Phil.
I muted Elsie's thing just because I think she was causing the background.
Okay. Please go on, Council.
I just wanted to congratulate Councilwoman Kim Cho Han. The Arts Commission did a great job sponsoring the art walk, even though they're very limited by the COVID-19 restrictions. There were over 30 people, went up and down, led by John Marin. They did a great job and it was nice to see it occur. And I even had some stuff at Pino's. And finally, just for everyone, remember absentee ballots, no matter how you want to vote, are out. There are a lot of videos, so you can go to the county clerk's office in case you don't know how to fill them out or unfamiliar. So, no matter how you vote, please make sure you get them in. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. And Stephanie and Josh, I'm not sure which one of you has.
Josh does.
I'm sorry, I thought Stephanie.
But I, thank you, thank you.
I was, I'm sorry, Josh. I was looking at an old calendar. I apologize. But it was nicely done, no matter what.
Yeah, Arts Commission, yeah. No matter who's their liaison, they make sure it's done. So, yeah.
Okay, Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
I just wanted to mention one item that I believe council will be aware of, the fact that school reopening plans for Bartle and Irving were delayed. And as a result, our crossing guard appointments will have to be delayed until we have a better sense for when that opening is going to be. So, when we get to that portion of the agenda, I'm going to ask us to table that, as well as we'll have to pull the salary resolution from consent because they're on there. But there are other items on that resolution we will want to vote on. So, I'm just using this opportunity to put that on your radar when we get to that. We're only waiting for when school reopens. And once we know that, we will, the guards will be ready and learn a lot of communication with them about that. That's it.
Okay. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right. I do have a report, and Council President, I'm sorry, but it's a little longer than usual. He and I are always kidding each other about the length of our reports. All right, good evening, everyone. I'll start my report tonight with some very good news. Last week, we received official notification from Highland Park that Highland Park was accepted into the AARP Network of Age Friendly States and Communities. We are the first municipality in Middlesex County to receive this distinction. And I received this award, this distinction, on behalf of the Borough last week. This network is affiliated with the World Health Organization's Global Network for Age Friendly Cities and Communities. It helps participating communities become more livable and age-friendly by creating safer and more walkable streets, increasing housing and transportation options, broadening access to key services, and expanding opportunities for residents to participate in community activities. Thank you to Kimberly Perkins McGraw, Senior Program Coordinator of our Department of Aging, Kimberly McGraw, Community Services Assistant, and our Public Information Officer, Harry Glazer, for their work on the application process. And thank you to Councilwoman Stephanie Kim Cho Han, who will be overseeing all of the follow-up steps to take advantage of the opportunities now available to us. I'm going to pivot for a second to some more discouraging news. As I mentioned in my update yesterday, sent out by NICSIL, the rate of new cases of COVID-19 in Highland Park has gone up and is now at the highest level of active cases since April. The ages of these confirmed positive cases is skewing younger, with many of them in their younger teens or 20s. One of the effects of these increases is that at least two parochial schools in our area, which took great efforts to open with all the requisite precautions in September, are going temporarily remote. Just today, Dr. Taylor, Superintendent of Highland Park Public Schools, postponed the opening of our lower-grade schools due to the spike in cases. We all need to take this development very seriously. We do not want to become a poster community for COVID-19 cluelessness. The ways we decrease the risk of the virus spreading are remarkably simple and straightforward. The same CDC advice we've been reiterating for months. Wear a mask if you leave your home and will encounter others, inside or outside. Keep a social distance of six feet or more whenever you interact with people outside your immediate family. If you're going to interact with others, outside is better, and you should wear masks and stay socially distanced. And remember to wash your hands frequently. In response to the rise of COVID-19 cases in our borough, we'll be celebrating Halloween this year a bit differently, all in a socially distant way. One, neighborhood trick-or-treating following the state and CDC's guidelines to minimize contact and maximize safety and Governor Murphy's common sense precautions. A, families should travel together in small groups. Residents are encouraged to leave prepackaged treats on their front steps or outside their doors for easy access. Please don't put these treats in a bowl. Leave them spread out on a tray or table. Trick-or-treaters should wear PPE masks under their scary masks. Our police department is putting together plans for a safe trunk or treat in two locations in town from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Halloween, and you'll hear more about that. Along Main Street, we have several activities. First, the Legend of Highland Marsh, a socially-distanced taunt, a self-guided spooky walking tour along Main Street, which will be open the week before and through October 31st, under the creative orchestration of our resident, Alex Dawson. Next, there will be music on the corners of South Third and North Fourth. Main Street Highland Park will have goodie bags along Main Street. Not, we're encouraging people not to enter the businesses, but Main Street Highland Park is pre-making goodie bags, and there will be tables along the main drag. And we will have an outdoor movie night. So, there'll be a lot for everyone to do for Halloween in a safe way. Finally, I will conclude with a small tale of commendable public service and heroism. Dr. Irving Kaufman, a longtime resident, shared with us that he called the Highland Park Police Department on Saturday night to ask for help in getting medication to two COVID-19 patients in a local high-rise building. Sergeant Mohab Hanut responded to the call. He donned PPE, picked up the meds at Rite Aid, and personally delivered the medications to both patients. Dr. Kaufman now reports that the patients are on the mend, and he and we thank Sergeant Hanut for his selflessness and for aiding in their recovery. Finally, as you will see on the agendas, the council will be voting tonight on asking our Borough Administrator to prepare a comprehensive deer management plan for the council to review. I want to make it clear that this is not a vote to perform the deer hunt. It is a vote to review a plan that incorporates, to create a plan for review that incorporates the bow-and-arrow hunt plus other management strategies. All right, we can move on now. All right, we're about to enter our first public discussion. It's a 21-minute total, three minutes maximum per person, so that we can allow for as many people as possible. Comments are limited to items that are on the agenda. So, if you have something to discuss that is not on the agenda, please hold it for the second public comment session. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is 30 seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the Raise Hand button in the application on Zoom. The Borough Administrator will announce your term by reading either your name or the last four digits of your phone number. And please begin by telling us your first and last name, as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine or raise the Raise Hand button now. Borough Administrator, I'll rely on you to announce the first speaker when there is.
First thing firsthand raised I see is Ravit Duncan. Please repeat your name and address.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Ravit Duncan. I live on Lawrence Ave in Highland Park. I am speaking about the hunt plan resolution. Couple of concerns. One is when we talked about the feeding of deer resolution, we struck out some language. Council agreed with those strikes and the language was removed. It has crept back in. So, now that same language that we agreed is simply not factual is again in the new resolution. So, I think that one needs to go back and strike it out from this resolution again. If it's not factual, wasn't factual a month ago, not factual now. So, I'm going to talk about some of the paragraphs in here. The notion that the deer population are having impacts on natural areas, neighborhoods, quality of life. This is a much more general white sweeping than the actual complaints that people presented. The Board of Health specifically talked about the deer hunt not being a good solution in terms of Lyme disease, so it's not clear what public health and safety we're talking about. We've already mentioned that car accidents due to deer are not on the rise. It is not relevant to Highland Park. Fish and Wildlife pointed that out. So, this language is just not grounded in science or even your local Board of Health recommendation. Terms of a second paragraph that was about inviting various views and individuals to speak, soliciting input from the Commission, the Board of Health, Sustainable Highland Park, Native Plan Sanctuary, these are wonderful volunteers. We truly appreciate the work that they do. But let's not confuse that with rigorous research in the area. We do not have any studies about what is actually going on in Highland Park. And the anecdotes that they provided are illuminating and touching, but the plural of anecdotes is not evidence. Going back again, the mayor mentioned last time, I believe, that in Highland Park, we're about science. I applaud that. Absolutely, we are about science. But when we are about science, we need to be clear about what kind of science we're soliciting. And if we're cherry-picking science, and it's a bit disingenuous to make a claim that we're about. So, I'm hoping that the new, that the plan, what the mayor just said about other options, that those include nonviolent options. I really would like to get clarification about what those others are. And generally, I think that doing this now, at this time with twin pandemics, is tone deaf. Thank you.
Thank you, Ravit. Borough Administrator?
Next person, Anna Haline. Please repeat your name and address.
Hi, thanks for pronouncing my name correctly. Yeah, so this is Anna Haline, 235 Montgomery Street. First, Mayor, I'd like to thank you for bringing the attention to the dangers of distracted driving. And I wanted to ask you if this will also be followed by speed bumps, narrowing of the streets, or other measures to reduce mindless speeding in our town. And second, in case you haven't, all of you haven't checked your email today, you have received over 400 signatures against the deer hunt, including over 120 individual messages that I expect you to read and listen to as carefully as you have been listening to people complaining about deer. Two weeks ago, we had about 250 signatures. So, that's an increase of almost 40% in two weeks. And like I told you at the last meeting, this number will keep increasing as more people learn about this plan of yours. And I can tell you, people are shocked and appalled that Highland Park, this progressive town that they love, will be the first in the county to use these Stone Age methods to deal with a problem. The town itself caused with its overdevelopment. None of the towns around us wants anything to do with the deer hunt. Where does this blood thirst come from? Like Ravit said, is 2020 not horrifying enough for you as it is? Like you want more death around you? And I also wanted to talk a bit about these statements in the deer resolution. So, they are supposed to be facts, things that the council take to be true. And speaking the truth means to not only present one side of the story and to not try to dress up dirt as if it was gold. So, for example, you write that you have received numerous calls and emails. Well, how many is that? And also, why do you leave out the fact that you have also received numerous calls and emails from people who actively oppose the hunt? Are people who complain about deer worth more than others? Or why do their voices count, but not ours? And I also want to point out that just because someone has complained about a deer issue, it doesn't mean that they want an actual hunt. They want their issue solved, and those are two very different things. And next, you write that people who have contacted you are concerned about the deer population. And again, this is not true. You have previously stated that the concerns they have are that they are afraid of deer, they are angry that their plants are eaten, et cetera. So, this is again, an important distinction. And I could go on and on because the entire resolution is full of over-generalizing language. And considering that these are the facts you take for truths, you should be more careful. And so, yeah, I think that, sorry, but this will not do. You need to go back to the drawing board and create a document that is based on what's actually going on in our town, rather than describing like what sounds like a dream from Division of Fish and Wildlife Official. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Next person I have is coming up as Carl Prey. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello?
Yes, can you please state your name and address?
This is actually Mary Forsberg on my head.
Oh. Okay.
I live at 317 Dennison Street. And I basically, I would like to speak about the deer hunt. I'm not going to say the same things that people, the two people in front of me said. But I agree with them wholeheartedly. And I think what I, I was listening to the September council meeting where there was a discussion about using science to look at this issue. And I mean, the main science that you've looked at is from the Division of Fish and Wildlife, who have their own way of dealing with things. Rutgers Garden, I have a. Rutgers Garden, I have a copy of the plan that Rutgers, that Rutgers has for the ecological preserve and all of this. It's really kind of a frightening plan. And people at Rutgers Garden, where I do volunteer work, are quite upset about it. But I think that there needs to be a lot more open-mindedness in looking at this. Like, you need to bring in the Humane Society, which has written an excellent, excellent booklet on managing deer, and also the the Association for APN. Now I can't remember exactly what it stands for. The Animal Protection League of New Jersey. You talk about them as if they are cranks, not scientists. Many of those people are actual scientists, and they are people who work with animals every single day, unlike people in Fish and Wildlife, who tend to do research on animals. So I hope that this resolution, I hope you will not vote for this resolution. And I hope that you will develop a more balanced way of looking at this because I don't think a deer hunt is what Highland Park really needs or what people in Highland Park want. I believe that the last person who spoke talked about 400 signatures and a 40% increase in two weeks. And I think that's going to go up much, much higher. And it's true, in this time with a pandemic, talking about the COVID, we don't, we don't need this kind of violence coming to Highland Park. So that's all I have to say, but I hope you will not vote this for, in favor of this resolution. And I hope that you will rewrite it, and I hope that you will have a less biased view of what, how you manage deer. Because I think that the majority of municipalities in New Jersey are not in favor of a deer hunt and would not go along with this. So thank you very much. Appreciate the work that you guys do.
Thank you.
The next, yeah, I have a few more hands. And just to, you usually ask me, Mayor, we have about 10 more minutes in this session. This time, it's a person who's coming up as a phone number. So the last four digits of your phone number are 7663. Again, I'm going to unmute that person who is 7663. And if you could please state your name and address for the record. I think you've muted yourself. Try unmuting. Again, I'm going to give you one more shot. It's the person whose phone number ends in 7663. You're unmuted on our end. I'll ask you to unmute. You have to unmute yourself on your phone as well. All right, Mayor, I'm going to go to the next person. The next person who comes up is Tammy Russ Fishbane. I have unmuted you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Tammy Russ Fishbane. I'm at 232 Graham Street. I just have a quick comment. I just want to support the resolution. And I urge all of you council members and mayor to think of this as a public health issue. And what we've learned from COVID is that we should not politicize public health. And so I urge you to be strong, be brave, and do the right thing by Highland Park in keeping us safe and healthy, and vote for this resolution for the deer hunt. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, anybody else?
Yes, Mayor. Next person who comes up is Diane Feldman. Diane, I've unmuted you. If you could just state your name and address, please. Diane, I think you're muted on your end. Not sure how to coach you. There you go. Hi there.
Diane Feldman, 409 North Fourth Avenue. I see that the changes in the borough ordinance about handicap parking is the wording is going to change from handicap to accessible or whatever is an appropriate way to replace the word handicap. And I would like to commend the town in moving forward with this. I think that as language has changed in the years since the ordinance was created, I think that showing that the town is using more current terminology. More current terminology is a very positive statement for the town. It's a very inclusive message to give to people who are looking for accessible parking. You're on the, you're following the trend set by the state, who also changed their wording. So I just wanted to put in a vote of approval for what you're doing. I think it's very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, anybody else?
Yes, Mayor, I've got someone coming up as Gabby. If you could state your name and address for the record. Go ahead.
Yeah, yes, Gabby Grunstein, 416 Magnolia Street. I just wanted to let the council mayor know that I support the resolution for science-based deer management, including a deer hunt. While I understand Highland Park is not the end-all, be-all of deer management in New Jersey. This is a statewide problem, and every town needs to take deer management seriously. It is ravaging our state, our farms, our forests, our natural areas, and even in Highland Park. So I support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabby. Are we okay with time?
Looks like, yes. I had marked down that we had to close at 7:45, and we have two more hands, so we should be able to get it done. Next up is Lindsay Holman. I've unmuted you. Unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Hello there, my name is Lindsay Holman. I'm at 324 Magnolia Street. I am calling to state that, as other callers have stated, the majority of Highland Park residents are against the deer hunt. This is not a matter of, you know, just, you know, being cute or something. This is a matter of effectiveness. There absolutely should be a deer management plan, but it should not be cruel, it should not be violent, it should not be graphic violence. The children in our community will be traumatized by for years to come, and that's just what it will be. We have known from other communities choosing to do this horrible route that it winds up being graphic violence before the children. And it's very scary to see, and fortunately, it winds up causing more car accidents in the long run. It's not an effective choice, and the majority of Highland Park residents do not support it. So I urge the council members to please vote against it. Also wanted to add that your own Department of Health, Highland Park Health, said they're against it as well. So I would be very disappointed and shocked if you choose to vote for it, considering your own Department of Health has stated their reasons for voting against it. Thank you.
Diane, and I think Borough Administrator, you said there was one other hand?
Correct. Tatiana, I've unmuted you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm Tatiana Gelfand, 118 North Fifth Avenue. Yes, I want to join the people who are opposing the hunt. And I just want to comment, the first thing is we are not talking about doing nothing or hunting. We have to talk about the hunting solution and non-lethal solution. At the last meeting, and now many people specifically asked not to have the hunt. However, the council and the signatures mentioned today, that the number of them is growing. However, the council only adjusted the previous bow hunt plan to include also non-lethal strategies. I want to point out that killing deer and non-lethal strategies are not interchangeable. You cannot kill deer first and then apply non-lethal strategies. It makes no sense. The only thing that makes sense is to start with non-lethal measures alone and see how they work over time. By the way, there was an article in centraljersey.com that Edison might consider a sterilization of deer. And however, our council and the mayor have been refusing to invite APL continuously, despite numerous requests from residents, and this was never kind of really addressed. And they do have a scientist, a biologist, a lawyer, so it's not just like one another advocacy group. First of all, the public has to know the SARAH exploration of the non-lethal strategies. The public have to have access to their presentation or like whatever it will be organized Zoom meeting to know what and how is available. And I highly, I'm highly strongly asking the council not to vote no on the current version of this resolution until both sides will be, of the residents, will be presented. Many times that, you know, I called, I was told, yeah, there are people on both sides, but I was never answered the question, how many are on that side? And I also want to know, to make a note, that the number of hunters in New Jersey is drastically declining. In 2019, there were only 20,000 people, hunter, people who bought a hunting license. This comes to 0.3% of the population. Why are you listening to that side and not, and completely ignoring the other, the other side, which is in larger, larger majority? So I will not repeat about nonspecific formulation because this is really so obvious that it has to be specific and not just like saying like health and safety issues, which again, as was pointed out, were denied by the Board of Health. So it's not relevant for Highland Park, and it's not the issue. They voted against the hunt.
Excuse me, Mayor, did, or Borough Clerk, did you call time?
A while ago.
I thought so. I didn't know if everybody heard you, so.
I didn't hear.
I didn't hear it either.
Could you hear me saying, or I was disconnected?
No, we heard you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tatiana.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on now. And for those of you who may not have had a chance to speak, there will be another opportunity later. Okay, Clerk, could you please report on advertising the ordinance, amending sections of the code to update language that refers to persons with disabilities and accessible parking for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance amending sections of the Borough Code to update language such that it more accurately refers to persons with disabilities and the accessible parking associated therewith was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public instruction as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the title, take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any public hearing? I want to thank.
Mayor, Mayor, I'm sorry. I guess you should instruct people to lift their hand.
Prior to this. I'm sorry, Borough Administrator?
You said public hearing, but I don't, I guess we need to give people a chance. I see one hand up. I don't know if that person wants to speak for this matter. The person named Mary with your hand up, are you interested in speaking on this resol, on this ordinance? I'm going to just allow her to talk for a moment, Mayor. Hi to the person, Mary, who's got the hand raised. Are you interested in speaking on this ordinance?
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I wanted to address the deer.
That's not what we're talking about now. Can you please hold it?
Yeah, I'll keep you up there. Sorry, Mary.
Okay, what the Borough Administrator asked for is anyone interested in making a public comment about the ordinance regarding language that refers to persons of disabilities and accessible parking?
Mayor, I don't see any hands at this time.
Okay. In that case, may I have a resident adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title? Motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes, definitely, and thank you very much for all of your help to the clerk on getting this moved forward. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, and Borough Clerk, can you adjust the records to indicate that Councilman Matt Hale did join us?
My apologies.
Okay, Clerk, would you report on introduction of the land use ordinance amendment for home-based businesses for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, amending Chapter 230 Land Development concerning accessory buildings, garages, and home occupation in the code of the Borough of Highland Park has been introduced and ready by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, before I go into the consent agenda items, I want to note that the items numbers 26 and 27 will be separated for individual votes after the consent agenda. So may I have a motion to adopt the following stored items? Number 12 through number 25.
Yeah, just separate number 20.
I'm sorry?
Number 20 has to come off consent. That's the salary resolution that includes the crossing guards.
All right, so may I have a motion to remove number 20 from the agenda?
I have a very minor question on number 13, 1020-265. It talks about the date for fireworks. It says Thursday, the 31st, but it doesn't have a month.
December 31st, New Year's Eve.
But it's going to be part of the public record. Thank you. I've moved the consent agenda.
Okay, do I have a second? Second. Okay, roll call, please.
You were separating this salary resolution first?
Oh, you guys.
Sorry.
Okay, can I have a motion to separate salary resolution number 20?
So moved.
Okay, then may I have a motion to accept, a motion to adopt the following items on the consent agenda? 20 through 19 and 21 through 25.
So moved.
Which consent agenda are you looking at? Because I have 13A.
I have the same thing as Stephanie.
Mayor, I think there's a discrepancy in the numbering on your annotated agenda and the one that went out to the public.
The one that went out to the council is using our peak agenda management, and Gail has the one that we used to use.
All right, well, we need to make sure that's better coordinated so this doesn't happen, but in the meantime.
So I'm sorry, council members, I have something, a document that is different from yours. from yours. It's impossible for me to conduct this with, in this way. So I'm going to ask the Borough Administrator, who hopefully has.
One second.
To read off the consent agendas for the vote.
Yeah, give me one moment. I'm gonna pull up the one you're looking at to make sure I am looking at the right one. Apologies. Here we go. Sorry about, give me two seconds. So could you, Mayor, unfortunately, because you were using different numbers than the one I was looking at, we're gonna pull off the salary resolution and then tell me what the other two were that you had mentioned.
The other ones.
Right.
Yeah. So basically, according to, Joan, maybe you can help me out with this?
Well, you're voting on numbers 10-20, 258 through 265, and then they're voting on 1020, 267 through 1020, 271.
Thank you.
Because the peak agenda system had a little glitch in their numbering.
Okay, that's the same as what you just said, Mayor. Just, I just confirmed.
Right.
Okay, so would you, Borough Administrator, just state the correct, correct numbers that they are going to be voting on from the consent agenda? Because I.
Sure, but Joan just did it, but I'll do it too. I'm going by reso number to try to, to clarify this point. Resolution 10-20-258, which on the publicly posted agenda was 13A through 10-20-265, which is 13I, we're skipping over 13J, which is the salary resolution, 1020-266, because we need to pull that out separately. And then we have 10-20-267 through 10-20-271. Those, those are, that's basically 13K to 13O. Apologies again, and we will make sure this confusion won't happen next meeting.
Okay. Can I have a roll call, Borough Clerk, on that?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Does she hear or not hear?
Is John listening? Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing preparation of a deer management plan? I don't know the number you're looking at.
14A on the agenda list, 1020-272.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera? Councilman Fine?
After considering all sides of the issue and the costs and effectiveness of all the different methods we've discussed for dealing with the overabundance of deer in our community, I believe that it is the, in the interests of our environment, our ecosystem, public safety, to establish a controlled bow hunt in Highland Park at the Borough's 14-acre Meadows property. So in regard to the resolution before us, which will authorize Borough Administrator to develop a deer management plan that would include the logistical and safety details for a controlled bow hunt at the Meadows, as well as non-lethal and regional deer management strategies, I vote yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
This resolution merely calls for the preparation of a plan that the, and it also specifically calls for the Borough to review that plan before acting. And I believe it's going to be very comprehensive. There are a number of target options in it that I've requested be in it and that I'll be taking a look at. I know that it's a ball of contention throughout the town. It's a bone of contention in my household, as a matter of fact, on a very active and strong basis. I think we need a plan. We certainly can't do anything before we have a comprehensive plan. I vote yes.
I'm, I'm here now. I was trying to speak, but I was on mute. In regards to the comprehend, putting a plan together and having a comprehensive review, we, I have received a lot of phone calls and emails. The first set of phone calls starting about three years ago, or email, that was people writing us, requesting us to do something about the deer population. In the past, I would say, three to six months, we have had numerous phone calls from people saying, and emails, saying there should not be a hunt, there should not be any, any kind of hunt or any kind of control. And based on all the information that we have received, we have a lot to do on council. This is not something that we willingly get at the start and say, you know, we have nothing else to do, so let's do, let's look at how we can do a deer hunt. That was not, that was not one of the things that we were looking at. This came from the concerns of many of our residents that were concerned about Lyme disease, what had, the deer eaten through their properties, that there's not moving when they're trying to get into their homes, they can't use their backyards, and such, and, and so forth, and so forth. With that, I would say, yes, we definitely need to look into a deer management plan. So I vote for a deer management plan.
Councilman Hale?
I'll just echo what my colleagues have said. This is a resolution to create a comprehensive deer management plan that focuses on all different ways that we may be able to, to better manage our deer population. This is a contentious issue by far. This is clearly creates some high levels of passion and often only focusing on one side of the debate. I think that the goal of this resolution is sensible, and I think that we need to move forward with a comprehensive plan that takes in all of the potential ways of managing our deer better than we currently do. And so I vote yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Um, I cannot support a plan with a controlled bow hunt on deer when I see neighboring Edison considering an alternative, as one of our residents has mentioned, the removal of ovaries and reducing their deer population. Not often do I praise another municipality for handling issues better than us. The fact that Edison met with the Animal Protection League of New Jersey around the same time as this, as we are discussing this issue last year, and, and the vision of Fish and Wildlife, as to their discussion on figuring out what would be the best solution for their town, and, and we, and the fact that we couldn't, and it was pushed off and pushed under the rug, is very unfortunate. Governor Murphy announced yesterday he is suspending the bear, the bear hunts, focusing on complete review of current scientific data in developing a new black bear policy that promotes public safety and welfare while protecting important wildlife with a focus on non-lethal bear management techniques. But yet, here we are with a new Highland Park purge and becoming the first town in Middlesex County to have a deer plan along, that is a deer plan. I, I don't know why we even put non-lethal and controlled bow hunt in the same resolution when it's counterproductive, but, but that's, I guess that's what was discussed. But yet, here we are, so I'm voting no.
Moving on to the next item, we have a resolution to proclaim October 9th, 2020 as Indigenous Peoples' Day. May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera? Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Absolutely.
Councilman George?
Yes, definitely.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Thank you to the Human Relations Commission and Historic Commission for their work on this resolution. Tonight, we join a number of states and cities observing some form of Indigenous Peoples' Day as we move forward towards the right side of history. Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject Chapter 159 Resolution, Middlesex County Assistance Grant?
So moved.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
No.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, question since, are we still appointing crossing guards?
No, and we need to, we pulled the resolution for the salary resolution, which was number 1020-266, in part for that reason. We need to remove or amend the resolution to remove the crossing guard positions at this time. Again, that will be put into place once we know the schools are opening. And, but there are other people on the salary resolution that we want to keep, so we'd be deleting the crossing guard from the resolution at this time, and that, we'd make that amendment. So we'd be keeping Grace McKenna and Rose Texera, new library folks on, just to clarify.
So that resolution?
1020-266, which was on consent. We pulled it off, and now we need, we need a vote on it.
But amended.
The amend, to amend, I don't know the procedural way to do that, but I just explained it, the, the change that needs to happen.
So Borough Attorney, some advice on this? Resolution 1020-266, Terry?
Yes.
You, you can go ahead and adopt the resolution as amended with the changes that Terry just read into the record. In other words, there are people on the resolution that should go forward. The crossing guard should be held until, you know, you're gonna have the crossing guard. So you could move them to adopt that resolution as amended, as set forth on the record.
Then may I have a motion to adopt resolution authorizing, resolution to amend the annual salary resolution as amended by the Borough Administrator?
Also moved. Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
We're about, now it's time for us to move into our second public discussion session. Each speaker has three minutes, but may comment on any topic, whether it's on the agenda or not. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and will offer a 30-second warning, and then indicate when three minutes has lapsed. The session will wrap up by 9:00 PM. So Borough Administrator, you'll let me know about that. And it is now, what is the time now?
8:06.
Okay, so it's now 8:06, and I'm opening up the floor for public comment. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand button on Zoom.
Excuse me, Mayor, Councilman Hale, I muted you due to some background noise I attributed to you. Now, now I gotta figure out how to unmute you. There you go. There we go. I don't see any hands raised, Mayor.
All right. Then I'd like to ask for a five-minute recess at this point before we go into our work session. Okay, let's take that recess. We'll, we'll read in five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I'm going to ask that we get started with our work session, and the first item on the agenda is RGEA, a community solar update. Terry, would you like to introduce the Gable folks?
Sure, and I'll just give a little orientation, and then I'll hand it over to Belle and Andrew from Gable Associates. As a reminder, RGEA stands for Renewable Government Energy Aggregation, and council has already authorized Gable on our behalf to do a request for proposals from the energy market, to see if we can beat, basically, the renewable energy portfolio that PSENG offers residents, and save people some money as well. And there's a lot more to it than that, a lot more mechanics, but I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that since you authorized that a number of meetings ago, we got the green light from the Borough Attorney on the, the bid documents that are now at the Board of Public Utilities under review. They have to give us either a green light or say, they have a 30-day window with which to comment. We don't anticipate that being an issue. Once that happens, we're on a timetable to get the proposal out onto the street to see what kind of proposals we get back. And so I will keep you all posted as we move that forward. If you have any more under-the-hood kind of questions on that, you could certainly ask them of Belle and or Andrew. However, the reason I invited them to come today was really to speak to you about an opportunity around community solar. And one of the reasons I really needed them here is, while I think I understand it conceptually, I have, I'm still learning a lot about it, what it is, and they're gonna explain it in part because the Board of Public Utilities has just literally the next last day or so announced the second round of pilot projects, like recently, are open. And this is something that I know we've talked about in the past. Normally, we might have taken it to committee and then all that, but the, the window to apply is going to be pretty narrow. So since we had this meeting, we decided to, to bring them here to present to everybody. So with that, unless somebody wants to talk about energy aggregation, I would, I would love to turn it over to Belle and Andrew to kind of give you an overview of what your community solar program in New Jersey is, because it sounds like one thing, but it's really kind of something else, and it is a pilot program. So with that, any questions on energy aggregation before we go into it? So welcome. Thank you both.
Thank you for having us. Appreciate it. Belle, I'll let you kick it off.
Sure. Hi, everyone. How are you? Hi, Hale. Hale, great job on the marriage last month. It's still holding up.
I didn't want to embarrass you, but I was gonna ask, how's married life?
It's still holding up great. I think we're gonna keep doing it.
Good.
So I work at Gable Associates. We are a consulting, energy consulting firm over on Dennison Street. I had information a couple of weeks ago on the RGEA process. We, as far as community solar, we'd be working on putting in application in Highland Park. But more importantly, community solar, the purpose of the program is to allow residents who cannot host solar on their property to be able to access the bill savings through a project that is remote from their location. So, for example, reasons that you can't have solar on your house could be you have an old roof, you don't own your house, or you're in an apartment building. And in a lot of cases, those kind of situations affect low and moderate income residents the most. The idea is, would have an LMI resident. The idea is, would have an LMI resident be a recipient of these bill credits. The energy from the solar project would be going into the grid, and we could focus 100% on serving these low and moderate income residents. The way that we are looking towards doing this is the same mechanism we agreed to with RGEA, which is the opt-out system, especially with an LMI community. It saves a lot of time. It also saves money to be able to just grab up the population that you want to serve. You want to have, give the savings to, just grab them all at once like we did with RGEA, rather than go door-to-door and sign them up, for example. It's just not as realistic, and it's not as fast.
Oh, may I jump in here?
Yes.
So community solar, as Belle said, is the intention of getting electricity that's produced from a solar project that's remote from somebody's house to their bill, to their electricity bill. The way this works is a credit on your bill. The credit in PSENG territory for like a single-family residential home is around 15 cents per kilowatt hour, and your cost normally for electricity for a residential home is around 16 or 17 cents, depending on how you pay your electricity bill, whether you have a third-party supplier or whatnot. So the savings is, could be tremendous. And by, Belle keeps saying LMI, but by that we mean low and moderate income residents. Now, that's not specifically COA-related, but it could be if you wanted it to be. But the intention would be to identify a pool, and we could talk about how we identify that pool, but opt-out makes that a little bit easier to administer the program, and I can explain more, more what that means. But to identify a pool of already qualified low and moderate income residents that have been qualified through some other, some other program that is already being run. Then we offer them the, the credit for this, and they engage in an agreement to buy the electricity or the, basically buy the credit from the project. Like we said, the credit in PSENG territory is around nearly 15 cents per kilowatt hour. The cost to the customer would be significantly less than that. We would maintain at least 50% of the value of the savings by doing the project. But because you guys have already used your landfill for a solar project, and there isn't a lot more space within the municipality specifically to host another solar project, we would probably be looking for someone that's going to develop this project outside of the municipality, but hopefully in an adjacent area, maybe on a warehouse in Edison, something along those lines. And then the electricity could still be wheeled back as long as it's within the PSENG territory. Now, we were talking about, I know Terry said that we kind of have a tight window on the applications. We don't. We actually have until February now.
Oh, I didn't read the fine print on that.
So, yeah, so, so it's, no, you're not incorrect. That was absolutely our thinking the last time we spoke. But the BPU was very kind in giving us more time. So we have a little bit of time to discuss this with you guys and formulate a plan on how we're going to approach and fill out the application. But it is a competitive process. This isn't like solar incentives otherwise. If you were to just apply for a solar incentive for your own home system from the state, you would basically fill out an application, and as long as you check the technical requirements, they would give you that approval. In this scenario, this is a competitive solicitation. You will be going up against many other projects that want to get into this. So we would like to get a level of maturity to our effort and to our application prior to us submitting it in February. But obviously, we do have some time to get there. What maturity would look like would be potentially establishing exactly how we're going to find the LMI customers. And so let me explain what that sounds like. Belle, correct me if I'm wrong, the maximum system size is still 5 megawatts? Or has it changed? Yes, okay. So it's still 5 megawatts, which means you can probably include up to 800, maybe 900, depending on how we formulate the agreements, different residents. But it doesn't need to be that many. If you guys, we can't pull together that many people. We don't necessarily need to find 800 individuals to do that. As I said before, LMI can be measured in what, honestly, the BPU kind of gave us a guidance here that as long as we can prove in some sense that it matches an LMI definition, then you can use those, those accounts in our process. We don't necessarily have to adhere to only Section 8 housing or defined LMI by COA or defined LMI by another program, but it would be helpful if we had a list of Section 8 housing to target them as potential inclusive in our opt-out group. The way opt-out works, as you're talking about with the RGEA, is that everybody's kind of into it. Once we identify a group of people that we want to have included, they're in, and they can tell us whether they want out. But basically, we're just going to include them from the go in that process. So this is probably helpful to find not just your traditional thoughts of low and moderate income of people who just can't make ends meet and would do better with the benefit of a cheaper electricity bill. But this could also be senior residents that are on a fixed income. Things like that could be something that we consider as trying to find this. And we've looked at the master-metered larger buildings, like the, the larger facilities you have for seniors within town. The problem that's presented is, while I said that the residential credit for community solar is around 15 cents per kilowatt hour, the commercial credit for community solar, if you're on a commercial account like those buildings are, is dramatically less. It's somewhere in between potentially even six or lower to three cents, depending on what tariff they're actually on with PSENG. So our target should be as many individual homeowners as we can, or individual account payers as we can, not necessarily anybody who's consolidated under a single master-metered account. But the, we can, we can explore every option that's in front of us in order to provide the most benefit to the most people, obviously. We don't necessarily need to be solely limited to LMI customers for our application. We can include residents or even the municipal government that aren't necessarily LMI customers specifically. But the, the advantage during 100% LMI is that that's something that's viewed as a preference by the Board of Public Utilities during this competitive solicitation process. So if we can identify, ideally, we could identify a site, a developer of where we're going to get the electricity and the solar energy, a group of customers that could be included, preferably 100% low and moderate income, because that will have the most benefit and match the exact goals of what the state is going for. And then we have a level of maturity, meaning that we have some contracting in development or in place before February when we submit the application. We should be in a good place in order for us to get a portion of the capacity. But we do need to identify a project and a developer beforehand. So we may have to run a competitive solicitation or a request for interest in a, in a process in order to identify that party that'll join us on our application. But the long and short of this is that if, if this can work out, then nearly 800 customers or residents within Highland Park would be able to get a nearly 50% reduction in their cost of electricity from this community solar program. It sounds a little more complex, but it really is just as simple as trying to produce it somewhere where it's ideal and get it to the people that need it the most.
Andrew, mind if I jump in real quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
I've at least had the benefit of like two or three conversations with you guys of, you know, slowly evolving my understanding. The, I guess one point I just want to clarify, I think I know the answer, but better have you answer it, would be this is a pilot, like you couldn't do this outside of the BPU program. This is kind of, this is a limited offering. And can you explain, is the state subsidizing these projects? Is that how they're working? You know, is that, is that why it's a pilot, you know?
Right, no, the pilot is, sure, the pilot is that this is, so your RGEA is, let's, let's talk about it in the context of what you've already started with as far as a renewable energy government aggregation project. That's going to be for the supply portion of your bill. And so that will, you pay, and I'm not sure if you under, look at your utility bills as much as we do, but you pay two different portions of an electricity bill when you pay an electricity bill. One portion is your distribution costs for PSENG to get the electricity to your, to your building and to your home. And the other portion of the electricity is the supply, the actual commodity for that electricity being generated, and then you, getting it to you for you purchasing it through the high-tension system. So under an RGEA program, you can get renewable energy for the supply, but your savings will only be on that supply portion of the bill. The community solar program is a, and the reason it's a pilot is because they're trying to develop a permanent program that could do this across the state as a more regular solution. But the, the advantage of the community solar is that your, that credit offsets both distribution and supply costs. So you could still be on the RGEA, getting your electricity through that program, having the savings that's associated with that, and getting a community solar credit on top of that that would additionally offset your bill and additionally increase your savings value by going green, basically by pushing green electrons to you. But it's just the credit for it under the pilot program. So really, what's pilot about this is we've, up to this point, in order for you to have solar electricity on your, or in your home, you would have to actually mount it on your house. You would have to mount it on your house or your neighbor's house and the neighboring property. You need to be physically connected, adjacent or contiguous to your property in order to do solar and for you to get the benefit. What community solar does is say, I'm going to put it somewhere where it's ideal, on a warehouse roof, on a canopy over a large parking lot, nobody's using, over a, you know, on a, on a landfill site, on a brownfield site somewhere else in the PSENG territory. But as long as you're a subscriber to that organization, the subscriber organization that's developed for that solar project, then you can get the credits from the community solar project. So that's, that's the nuance that's very different, because up to this point, if you wanted renewable energy that wasn't produced on your property, you had to go this purchase-the-supply-only route. Whereas now, this is kind of offsetting the entirety of your bill, more like what a, a project on your property would really do. So the savings when you have it on your roof offsets every bit of your cost except for the fixed fee for being a customer of PSENG. You have a monthly fee that says you have to pay this to be connected to the wires. Otherwise, PSENG drops you. But you can offset every, almost every other charge in all, in entirety or in portion if you have the solar on your roof. PSENG's credit that they're giving under the community solar program gets you to relatively that same place. You're not offsetting the entirety of your bill. You're offsetting probably a close, at the credit level, 90% of the bill. But because there is a cost to get that credit, the savings to the end user might be a little bit less than that 90%. Obviously, I'm thinking 50% is more of a reasonable estimation, but it could be greater. Depends on the pricing we get, right? So the cost to the municipality in order to go through this is probably negligible. I don't think the municipality actually has to put any money out, because the entire thing could be funded through the sale of the energy and, and the work of the subscriber group. But there would be an additional cost for running the subscriber group that would be added to the price per kilowatt hour that we contract with the end user. And that contract, again, if the credit's 15 cents, and say we get a proposal back to us from our developers to sell us the electricity for 3 cents, maybe we need 2 cents in order to administer the program. So we're selling it to the end user at 5, and they're getting 10 cents of savings for every credit that they receive. So that's, that's the kind of, I know it's relatively difficult to think about that math if it's not all on the same bill. That's something we're trying to get PSENG and the BPU to agree to, but they haven't yet. They're going to explore it and investigate it for year three of this pilot program. But for year two, we do have the opportunity to, to expand what we're doing, because the last, the last program that they ran, or the year that they ran the solicitation last year, they only accepted 75 megawatts of projects, which they received proposals or applications, I should say, for 400 megawatts worth of projects. Not that you need to understand what a megawatt is to understand that that's very popular and oversubscribed. This time around, they're doing 150 megawatts, which means there'll be probably 80-something projects, judging based on what they identified last year through the year one. And those 80-something projects could be, one of those could be very beneficial to Highland Park. So I don't know that we need you tonight to do anything in particular, take any actions or do anything as far as defining a group or a strategy of which direction you want to go in. I think our goal tonight was to introduce you to this idea again, begin to answer some questions that you might have about the process and the program. And then, as we progress towards February, getting underway with maybe a procurement to find that contract partner that we may need, and then developing what a subscriber group would look like for us. But that's, that's our general approach as of right now. Again, I'm not asking anybody to make a decision tonight. It's just, we want to present you with this opportunity to extend savings. The municipality can decide, though, when you do decide, how involved you want to be. There's varying shades of what we are involvement. The most extreme, most involved version would be having you guys be potentially even a financial backstop to the subscriber group, the electricity is purchased by the municipality, and then the sale through the subscriber group is, is basically ends with the municipality. You're the facing to the customer, and the developer has nothing to do with it. On the opposite end of the spectrum, the developer would be mainly responsible, and we would simply help identify potential candidates within the township that could benefit from the project or the borough that would benefit from the project. So the long and short of it is that there's, there's varying shades here of how much you want to be involved, how much risk you'd be willing to take in order to get involved and to administer the program. Obviously, Gable Associates works on every one of our projects to diminish the amount of risk for a municipal entity in doing any of these renewable energy projects. So we do have a strategy, like I said, about this adder to the, to the rate of electricity that could cover all of your risk potentially. But we would need to find out how much room there is between the price we can buy the electricity at and the price that it can be sold to the subscribers at. And that difference will tell us how much room we have and how much risk there is. Also, the size of the project and the size of the subscriber group will dictate how much electricity needs to be purchased each month and what that is as far as expenditures or risk on, on those expenditures. So I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of information that we still need, ground need to cover before we get to the application definitively. But it's important for you guys to start considering, do you want to do this? How would we find LMI customers within the borough and identify them for inclusion into our subscriber group? And then, how involved you would like to be? Would you like to be, you know, obviously, we can't use our solar project that's down on the, on the municipal landfill, because that's owned by PSENG and already dedicated. We can't use an existing system. There needs to be something built especially for this purpose. But we have enough time to identify one of those projects if, if we're interested in doing so. It would take either, as I said, an RFP process or something similar in order for us to identify that entity. So we would need to run that process and complete it prior to submitting an application. So keeping that in mind, schedules-wise, holidays coming up, end of the year, all those kinds of things, we probably would need to get moving in November in order to make this viable. So that's why we want to introduce it to you tonight, maybe kind of get your feedback, and then we can decide on what direction we're going in over the next month.
Okay.
It's a lot, I know. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have like 10 questions I wrote down, but I see Matt's got his hand up. I'm going to let the council people ask their questions first. So Matt?
Okay, so with the first project, the R, I'm getting the letters on, RCG, the, the one we already approved.
Yep, yep.
RGEA, thank you, the one we approved a while back.
Yep.
The idea is that everybody in Highland Park is going to be a part of that, and they're going to opt out of that, right?
Correct, yep.
So in theory, you have some of the information that you need to get about LMI based on that, right? Or is...
Well, we have, we can have the customer information. We'll get that from PSENG. They'll give us a list of all the customers within the municipal boundary. Maybe not names, but the account, you know, identification information. But we don't have whether they are LMI or not. That's, that's the nuance, right? We're not going to know based on the information we get for the RGEA which ones of those accounts are tied, are tied to homeowners or residents that are, that are low and moderate income per some definition that we create, either census tract, you know, median income of the county. They're in some other type of program, that kind of thing. But we would need to qualify those residents as LMI.
And the reason for qualifying it as LMI is because that's favorable for the pilot project, that they're, they're going to likely, if it's focused on LMI, it doesn't have to be, but it's, if it's focused on them, they're more likely to award it to us.
Yeah, I would say the majority of the first round of projects that they awarded went to almost 100% LMI projects, right, Belle? Was that?
Yeah, all of them.
All of them, so 100%.
The program requires 50%.
All of them were 51 or more.
51 or more.
Yeah, so they, they were not picking any that weren't LMI projects.
Is there, is there precedent, or is there a possibility to work, work with the school district for free and reduce lunches a metric?
I mean, obviously, yeah. I mean, if we can find those types of lists and resources that will help us identify this pool of, of potential candidates for the community solar credit. And we would look at every type of list or opportunity that you have to have that discussion. I think free lunches is a good way to go. I think if there's a list of Section 8 housing in town, that's another good way to go. And obviously, if we can, and the prices come back at a reasonable level, we'll consider the, the master-metered larger buildings as another big grab of residents in order to provide the savings to everybody. So there are a couple of different ways to go about it, but I, I agree. Yeah, free lunches, if that's a list that we can use, that would be a great resource to have.
And just keep in mind, we have inclusionary units throughout town that, you know, that were identified as part of our affordable housing plan. So those would be kind of, you know, the work would be, you have the location, now you got to find the customer and matching that all up. But it seems like there are some leads that we could follow in town to be able to do that, and Andrew rattled off a few.
Yeah, and to be clear, this wouldn't be the municipality having to do all the legwork on this. This is what Gable Associates would be here to assist with, not just being your expert in filing the application and all of that, but the legwork of, once you've identified a pool of people for us to go to and explain and include in the opt-out, we would then take the step of making those efforts. So it wouldn't be something necessarily that burdens the municipal staff with any new tasks.
Is it, is it possible to also use... Is it, is it possible to also use Census Track analysis to do it by an entire Census Track?
We could, but the problem with an entire Census Track is that we can't specifically know for a fact that those customers that we're including are LMI or not. We can use Census Track to basically say, we think they're in this area of the New Jersey. We can say that we think that they, there's this much percentage of LMI within this Census Track, but we can't guarantee that the Census Track will be 100% LMI or even 51% without some verification. The other problem that may confront us is that the utilities themselves are going to need a bit of information and documentation on the customers in order for them to enroll them on their side of the program. And while we might be trying to find the easiest way to enroll people on our end, they might require some proof of LMI that we're not asking for, or that was asked for through another program, and they need to certify it back to the utility. So I'm willing to do that, but we've talked about that before, Bell and I and the team at Gable, and that's kind of a bit more of a wider net than we want to cast. We kind of want to be a little bit more targeted in our approach and the pool of people that we include in this. Because as we said, it's not the whole municipality, it's only 800 residents.
Then my last question is, you mentioned that there's various levels of the borough being involved, and that's about our risk tolerance.
Sure.
What's the advantage of us being involved? I mean, what do we add that allows, and what do we get if we are more involved?
Right, so when, if you are involved in the project, there are a couple of different specific things that change. Developers' risk on their end of thinking that somebody won't pay the bill, or that this pool of customers won't be available to them, and they'd have to go out and do this legwork, is eliminated. So the cost of developing the project and the program gets a little bit cheaper for the developer if you guys are involved, which is good because then that savings can get passed on to the end user. It's also, you guys have those lists. Those lists don't exist to any other private entities. So if the, if a developer tried to do the same thing that we're talking about without the municipality's participation, they would have to go your normal routes, you know, your social media, your snail mail campaigns, those kinds of things to try and identify customers, sign people up, which historically haven't been great ways of getting people into these these programs for energy choice or third-party supplier in the state of New Jersey, despite there being substantial savings from people joining them. The municipality gives the optics that it's a solidified subscriber group, that that subscriber group can be managed. Also, a project that doesn't have the municipality involved can't use opt-out at all. So they would have to go out and go door-to-door, as Bell said, to try and find these individual customers. So if you are involved, it would be a lot easier, and it would be a lot less, I wouldn't say harassment, but there would be a lot less inquiries to each individual resident than there would be if it was an individual developer doing it on their own. So the benefit directly to you, though, obviously, as I said, this can all be cost-neutral. That would be the way we want to design it at the very least. But if you really wanted to add an adder to cover your base or to make it worth your while, that's, there's room for that in this approach as well.
One last question. We have a lot of transient folks who are here from Rutgers who stay for a little while and then leave.
Sure.
A lot of them are LMI, so is that, is there, what's the time period that the people have to be identified? And is there a repeat? Do you have to reapply every year, or is it once you're qualified?
There will be individual agreements with the subscriber organization and the account holder. Between the two, there will eventually be, you're in, here we are, I need you to sign on the dotted line kind of situation, potentially, that we have to go through that. But either way, we anticipate that the subscriber group will be fluid. And it'll never, it'll probably have the same base of some customers that want to be involved for as long as they possibly can. But we absolutely anticipate that year-over-year, we're going to have to go out and refill, backfill into that, into that opportunity. So it would be, while the residents may change, because I used to rent in Highland Park as well, while the residents may change over time, the locations where those residents will be, that will be paying electricity bill and likely low and moderate income, we can kind of predict that as well, right? So maybe the landlord explains that the last tenant was in this, or that we get in touch with them so that if they are a new tenant, they are aware that this is available for them. But either way, that would be part of our opt-out kind of marketing approach to capture those people that leave and then backfill those positions into this subscriber organization. So this is definitely not a set-it-and-forget-it kind of situation. This is something that's going to need active maintenance over the years.
Thank you very much for answering my questions, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you for the questions.
Any other council member questions? Tara?
It's not really a question, it's just a comment that I'm pretty sure that the free and reduced lunch lists are confidential.
Right.
However, we could send a letter home. The school would send a letter home to all of those people. And they could opt in that way. Also, I do know that when people register for the food pantry, the social worker in town has that information as well.
Yeah, I mean, we absolutely do not want to be invading.
Has other.
Okay, sorry, my bad. I was just saying, we don't want to be invading anybody's privacy. So absolutely, if there's confidentiality confidentiality concerns about how we go about this, we want to make sure we address that and we're above board the whole way. At no point do I want anybody thinking that we're harassing them, or that we're barraging them with emails or information about the program. And I definitely don't want to be contacting people that don't expect to be contacted for programs like this. So we're willing to work with whatever avenues of approach are available to us, but we don't have any that we're mandating, obviously, so.
Yeah, we're fortunate that in Highland Park and in our county, there's lots of social services. So like Matt mentioned, like Tara mentioned, there are multiple programs that we could either use in conjunction with each other to put this list of customers who are in need together, or if we find one complete list. It's really a customized approach that I'll be taking the lead on the research in, but being a Highland Park resident for 25 years, I feel strongly that we have the social services to find the information.
Exactly.
Any other council questions? Okay, I have a couple of questions. So as you know, Highland Park is 60% rentals. And this is, someone asked a similar question before. Those rentals do change over. And so would we be talking to the landlords?
It would be the account holder. Unfortunately, it would be the account holder, so it would be the resident itself, the tenant, that we would have to have that discussion with. But I think it would be worth our while to have the landlords be aware of this, and for the landlords, you know, themselves to be able to offer this as part of, you know, hey, here's your lease that you have to sign, but also be aware that this opportunity is available to you from the from the municipality, that kind of thing. I think we could design some type of outreach around that. Because I do, I have the same concern. With a transient population like this, we want to make sure that we have a full subscriber group at all times. If that means we need to start with a smaller group to achieve that constantly, then we can. We don't need to shoot for the 800 number. But we, you know, we can design this however works best for Highland Park.
And in a related question, we have some nonprofit organizations in town that own affordable housing homes. I'm thinking of the Reform Church, for instance. Would the people that live in those houses be the ones we talk to, or would it be the Reform Church who has this whole list of affordable homes?
The question will kind of come down to who pays the electricity bill, but I would think that we would want to talk to the Reform Church to help identify those residents and those locations. And then if they do pay their own individual bill and the Reform Church isn't, that doesn't included in that offering that they have, then we would need to sign them up as part of that opt-out group. But absolutely, that's a wonderful route to try and go through, and I think they would all be eligible for the, for inclusion.
Okay, and also, you know, thinking along those lines, while while they may not own properties, there are a lot of houses of worship in town that would know of the target income-level people in their churches and synagogues.
That would be wonderful to have something like that, some type of, because I'm imagining while we're still going to be able to use opt-out for our, you know, the end result here, to make it a little bit easier to grab people as we go and fill in the group over time, there is still going to be a level of marketing and outreach that's needed, and obviously, community relations in order to be able to identify. This is sensitive stuff to most people. You don't just walk up to someone and say, hey, I hear you're an LMI resident, and you want to join this community solar program. We're going to want to make sure that we're approaching this in the right way and using the avenues that already exist in order to have these conversations. So I think that's great. The houses of worship, synagogues, and temples and churches are probably one of the best routes that we would have in Highland Park. And it's great that they're that involved. I mean, a lot of places don't have that.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Andrew or Bell?
Tara?
Oh, Tara's got her hand up.
It's, again, it's not really a question, it's just, again, word of mouth. Most low-income families do know other low-income families, so once you sign one up, they talk to another one, they talk to another one. So I don't see us having a problem reaching whatever goal we set of getting people to sign up.
Yeah.
Well, that's great to hear. That really boosts our confidence in that this could be a successful program. Obviously, we're going to need to take some steps in between in order to identify how much electricity we can get, and really how large that pool is, once we start getting some of these lists in the same place. But it sounds to me like there's, there's an ability to make these outreach to these communities and get people signed up in Highland Park, and that there's, there might even be an easier approach to doing that than, and conduit to those conversations than we would have available to us in other places.
All right, thank you both very much.
Phil's got a hand up.
I'm looking forward to a program like this that would benefit so many people in our community.
It could be a great idea.
I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, who's that?
Phil.
Oh, Phil, okay. Go ahead, Phil, sorry.
Just very, very short. I believe, you know, while we have, you mentioned COA, and not exactly being the the old COA formulas, but for our affordable housing, I believe we have an independent agency that does the assessing for affordability. So not only would that be a source for the information, but also it sounds to me like a lot of this program is going to be driven by the amount of public outreach in foreign languages and foreign periodicals, the foreign language periodicals to do the outreach. And we could make that part, you could roll that into our affordability as well.
Absolutely.
That's another source.
That'd be great. I mean, it would be wonderful if, once this project and program's up and running, that every time somebody comes in for those types of services or to go through that process with you, they're offered this opportunity to join this program and to take advantage of these savings as well. Because the main goal, and the goal of the whole program and the legislation that was written around it, is to close the loop. And as I think you can all appreciate, solar is expensive, and it's easy for people with well means, with good means, and the roofs that can do it to put in solar. It's very difficult for somebody in a low and moderate income sense to put in solar, but your electricity bill, whether you have solar or not, covers the cost of other people installing solar on their roofs. So the point of community solar is to kind of close that loop all the way around, so that those people that are paying for it but can't use it now have the opportunity to get the value from solar and the reduction of their costs.
Yeah, it's a great program. Okay, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Terry, can you make sure everyone has my contact information? Be happy if more questions come up later, you just want to talk.
Of course.
Questions come in, Terry to us.
A little more. Now, this has been very helpful, and then with your coaching. The other thing I just wanted to mention to council we would need to do if we decide to move forward is enter into agreement with you guys, if that's what they so desire to do this. You know, we have obviously a confidence level working with you on other projects. But that'd be an initial decision that council would also have to make, and we can use the same consulting, the cooperative pricing, I'm at my understanding, to do that, so we don't have to go out to bid to do so if we show choose. So that might be one of our initial decisions that we would make.
Yes, yeah, that would be. So thank you very much, I appreciate everybody. Thank you, Bell, for inviting me to meet with everybody here. And I think it would probably be best if you guys do have questions to share them with Terry, and Terry, for you to send them to us. I just don't want a million answers to go in the wrong directions and anybody to get misinformed in some way.
And I can also let everybody benefit from the answers to everybody else's questions.
Exactly.
So we share it around.
Precisely. All right, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You'd have a nice night.
Thank you.
Bye.
I must say, Mary, I'm a little bit relieved we have a little more time to figure all the details out, because initially, they thought the window for the applications was going to be much shorter than February. So I appreciate you all entertaining the conversation tonight.
Okay, let's move on to the next item. This is another Terry item, Best Practices Inventory, Terry.
Yeah, for those of you, Mary, remember, this is something we do annually. It's required by the state. The administrator, me, and CFO jointly fill out a set of questions that they score. And the score, depending on how you do, impacts your state aid, okay? You know, basically, you know, they set a criteria, and if you don't do a certain score or better, they may withhold some of that. I'm pleased to report Lori and I spent the better part of a morning going through the questions, and we scored, and I don't know what the total is off the top of my head, 25, and the minimum you needed for 100% state aid was 16. So we exceeded the requirements of the state. The questions will be provided to the, the full survey will be provided to the administration committee. Frankly, I can't remember if I sent it or ready or not, but I will verify that. So they'll have the benefit of all the detailed answers, but the survey ranges anywhere from personnel, you have an employee handbook, to budget, to, you name it. And it's sometimes frustrating, but there's often some provocative questions that I do benefit from, so I kind of take it with the spirit with which it's given. And they also add a bunch of questions and take out a bunch of questions every year. So this year, they were very interested in land use for some reason. So that's all I wanted to report, where we do have to, and Joan will have to certify, that I let you know that this certification, Best Practices Inventory, was conducted by Lori and myself, that we did score the 25, and, you know, we got sufficient points to keep 100% of our state aid by their criteria. And if anybody should want a copy of the overall survey, I'm more than happy to share, but the committee will have it.
Okay, any questions for Terry? All right. PSCNG Smart Meter Initiative. I just wanted to let you all know that I will be testifying before the BPU this week, I think.
Remember, Mary, I hope it's on your calendar.
On my calendar.
I'm going to look for you.
About their new smart.
Tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. About my PSCNG, about PSCNG's new smart meter program. I think this is a great program that they're trying to put forward. This would allow them to install smart meters on their for customers, so that instead of having, you may all remember the time we lost after major storms when the whole community was down, and they had to rely on residents calling them to report outages before they can address individual issues. We saw that during Sandy. Those of you who were on the council during recent storms are probably well aware of that problem that we had. These smart meters would automatically tell PSCNG that service has been discontinued or cut off at a certain location, and they'd be able to address it very quickly. So I just wanted you all to be aware that I will be talking on behalf of PSCNG's smart meter programs. Okay. Bring Your Own Bag Ordinance Resumption, Phil.
Yeah. We all know about the program and its implementation, but as the COVID pandemic hit, or if you recall, some of the anecdotal evidence early on was that touching things were a problem. The stores began to require that if you brought your own bags, that you had to fill them yourself. And then there was a question about resuming plastic bags. In some cases, they still have. In some cases, they still had some stocks. The question was, should they use plastic bags and not use the, you know, bring your own bags? Could they be washed? And so on and so forth. As of now, had some questions and Matt and I had a very brief conversation about it as well. About whether we should be thinking about it, bringing it back or whether, in fact, we should wait a little bit longer. As the mayor mentioned, Highland Park is experiencing its own particular spike. New Jersey, some areas in New Jersey are as well. So the question is, do we want to consider, right now, we haven't been enforcing it. We haven't really been pushing it. It seems that all of the places that I visited in the last couple of weeks all allow you to bring your own bags. But the tellers or the clerks will not fill them. They will fill their own. Some of them are still using paper and never switched over. I think one or two institutions have started using plastic stocks under cover of the COVID-19 emergency. And the question is, do we want to talk about moving forward to put it back into place? Or should we let it run for a little while longer, the way things are, and then talk about putting it back into place? As New Jersey, you know, tries to get down to its under 3% for two weeks rate. It's just a general question. Do we want to, you know, what do we want to do? Do we want to leave it sit for a while? Do we want to wait for a while and then implement it? We want to start publicizing that we will be bringing it back at some particular landmarked time with the state. That's just an open discussion.
So Terry, I see your hand up, but.
Just wanted to just add, before everybody weighed in, I just wanted to throw a couple more points in, if you don't mind. The, to add to what Phil said, and just to clarify a point. It may have been part of the background thinking of some folks on, you know, kind of the pause on the program was the concern about disease infection. But the real reason, I mean, the most compelling reason, I guess, in my mind, was Stop and Shop could not find paper. That was like, they had a supply chain fallout where they were like, we couldn't, they couldn't get the paper bags. And then what are they going to do? And then add to it COVID. And I'm sure COVID was a lot of the reason why they were having trouble with the supply chain. That apparently is no longer a concern because I, my understanding is they do have paper now. And in fact, I heard, I guess, through the rumor, Facebook rumor mill, they put something out that the borough told them they had to do it. And in fact, we did not do any such thing at that point. I mean, we had been thinking about it as Phil indicated, like, when do we want to, you know, reinstate the program? And I did, yeah. So I just wanted to throw that in.
Yeah, and just to clarify the Stop and Shop thing, because I sent Terry over there.
Oh, good.
To get this, they did not put out a statement that we had done it. There were two clerks checking at the checkouts who were spreading that. They made a corporate decision, go back, to go back to not using plastic bags.
Got it. And so with that, and Rite Aid had never reverted as far, those were the biggest ones we were worried about with our ordinance were these larger Quick Check, Rite Aid, Stop and Shop, and Glock 27. I'm not sure about where they are on that. But what we had talked about internally was whatever council decides in terms of timing, we would certainly want to give a month or two's notice to all of the merchants that this is back on the radar. If you bought plastic, get, use it up and do not buy anymore, you know, that kind of thing. Kind of like we did the first time with the ordinance. So I just wanted to throw those, as to timing, I totally defer. I know there was legislation passed by the legislature in Trenton, much more aggressive, looking at banning paper, plastic, polystyrene. As far as I know, plastic straws, as far as I know, I don't think the governor has signed it yet, but I don't know that to be true. I didn't think to look before the meeting. So there may be some momentum coming from the state level that might reinforce some of what we're doing.
So I think the next step should be, Phil, I'm not sure if your council committee has discussed this. But if you could have a discussion with your council committee members on bringing back the plastic bag ban. I think that would be helpful and then we can discuss it at the next council meeting.
I think also we have Sustainable Highland Park and Environmental Commission coming up. And Sustainable Highland Park was the original motivator.
Right.
I'll ask them to agendaize it and we can speak about it there and get their thoughts.
Right.
I'd just like to put in a plug on the, from the business side of things, that the longer the lead time, most likely the better. From what we're hearing from businesses. So to Terry's point that we gave a long lead time last time before any changes happened. And I just want to put in a plug that we try and be cognizant of that important fact.
Of course, definitely.
Now, that we were very, that's why we were very upset when we heard this Stop and Shop thing, because they're like, no, we didn't do that, you know?
Be angry for the stuff we do do.
And one thing, can I say one other thing?
From Stop and Shop's mouth.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Tara. I didn't see your hand. I'll wait.
I just, I, from a point of view of businesses closing because of, you know, lost profits. Right now, plastic bags are a cheaper option for them. So I don't think that we should jump at bringing it back, the ban back right away. That's just my personal opinion.
Okay, well, we'll be discussing it further. I think to Phil's point, the three, actually, there are four businesses in Highland Park that are, had been using most of the plastic bags, were the Stop and Shop, Glock 27, Century 21. The.
Rite Aid.
Rite Aid and also the.
Quick Check.
Quick Check and also the First Avenue Deli was another one. They've all moved to paper. So, you know, I don't know what their stocks are either on their paper at this point. So, you know, it will all have to be planned out properly.
But we at least have a roadmap because we've done it before. So, you know.
And I agree with Matt. It should be timed. And in part, it should be timed. We may need to think about, you know, giving consideration to the state's timeline as well.
They're going to be a lot slower, at least if it's 18 months or something.
It's 18 months after the governor signs it.
Right.
18 months after that.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I think it's a good, maybe the signature would be a good, like, launch of whatever we decide to do is what I was thinking.
Okay. Native Plant Society Plant Sale, Phil.
Yeah, just briefly, unfortunately, I got the information on this too late to bring it to Public Works. But the statewide Native Plant Society does a sale every year, well, twice a year. Although they did not hold a spring sale this year of native plant species available for sale to municipalities, nonprofits, and also private individuals. They would like to use our native plant sanctuary as a drop-off point for the sale this year. They've redesigned it to do with, basically like most food services are doing things now, pre-ordered and prepaid only, delivery to trunk of the vehicle, no hand-to-hand deliveries. And they would like to use our sanctuary simply because it's fairly well-known throughout most of central Jersey. Other parts of the states is a very active native plant sanctuary. And they're looking for a central Jersey location to distribute. So the question was just whether we feel that would, the plant sanctuary would be appropriate. It's going to be manned by one of our people from the Native Plant Sanctuary and one of the people from the Native Plant Society, which is the state. And again, they're using all the present food delivery, social distancing techniques. They just want our blessing to go ahead and use it. I believe it's scheduled for the last Thursday in October, if I'm not mistaken.
All right, Native Plant Sanctuary Recorders Work Day.
Easy topic. They canceled it.
Okay. Okay. And Josh, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so Josh wanted to talk about the skate park.
Yes, thank you. So on September 16th, the Recreation and Arts Standing Committee had a meeting at which there was a unanimous agreement to recommend to the council to consider an idea that was proposed by Councilmember Susan Welford, it's a blessed memory. And that is adding a skate park component to Carcy Street Park. Some of the ideas that were discussed were obtaining Carcy Street Park, community members, you know, community members' input for design, potentially bonding to fund the project, and publicizing the modernization of Carcy Street Park to improve quality of life in Highland Park. And I add now, setting a goal of opening the new skate park the spring of 2022. What the Recreation and Arts Standing Committee is specifically recommending is that the council consider tonight whether to memorialize in a resolution by the first meeting in November, that the council approve of citing a skate park in Carcy Street Park. And by taking the step of agreeing on where to cite a skate park and memorializing that decision in a resolution, process of adding a skate park component to Carcy Street Park officially begin. And discussion regarding funding, including bonding, design, and public input may then proceed. So what I was hoping to hear from my colleagues is if you would support moving forward with such a resolution.
Hey, anybody want to help Josh determine that issue?
I think a skate park's a fantastic idea. I'd love to help.
I would too. I've also reached out to Edison.
I'm sorry?
I reached out to Edison because they do have a skate park. And somebody's supposed to get back to me to set up a meeting for somebody from our council to meet with them to go over how they did it and budgeting and maintenance and all of that.
Okay, Phil?
Yeah, I support the idea and I like the idea of Carcy Park. We've talked oftentimes about moving projects up there to benefit all of Highland Park. I have two questions, though, that before, I think it could go further. Like Tara mentioned, talking to Edison about how they did it and the risk. My two things, my concerns are maintenance and liability. I know liability is a major, major issue. You had a 12-year-old who breaks a tibia and it never sets right. The borough's out $300,000 in one pop. And maintenance, we don't have enough DPW to do the projects that we asked them to do now. To ask them to maintain this skate park is a major and significant maintenance piece. But I think if we could answer those questions satisfactorily, I think it's a great idea.
Tara, when you spoke to Edison, did you talk to them about any, do they cover liability? Do they have liability insurance or anything like that? Did you hear anything from them on that?
I'm waiting to have, I'm waiting for them to get back to me on that. I'm sure tomorrow I'll send another email and ask specifically about the liability insurance.
Okay, let me, let me, Josh and then Phil.
So I was actually going to ask, not to put you on the spot, Terry, but I wanted to throw the questions to you possibly. From your perspective, in terms of maintenance, because, I mean, it just, I know and I think I have this correct. Recreation and Arts or that department, Recreation Department within the borough is responsible for the maintenance of the Carcy Street Park. Is that correct?
Yes and no. Yes, in the sense that the rector coordinator will be responsible saying, okay, it's time to order the mulch, something like this. But then usually, it's a work order with Public Works, to Phil's point, that would say, when can we get some employees out there to spread it? Or I need you to fix the swing or whatever the item may be. So that, yes, they are kind of the responsible department to ensure that the maintenance happens. So I would be very interested in, does Edison maintain that in-house? Or do they have some other agreement with whoever built it? For all I know, they come in and tighten the screws or whatever. I don't even know. I mean, the first thing I ask somebody I know whose daughter skateboards, because I thought they'd be excited. And they're like, well, is it going to be plywood or is it going to be concrete? I'm like, ugh, I never thought about that. I don't know. So I realized, like, our world will have to expand. So I'll shoot Tara a bunch of questions that came up, you know? Or maybe I'll try to join you in that conversation if and when it happens. But I'm sure there's some answers on the liability because enough municipalities have these, Phil. But to your, we need to understand the boundaries around that. But I think there's a lot more to skate parks than I originally realized. That said, I'm sure there are answers to this question, you know?
I was going to answer some general, general questions, Harry, in terms of liability. Is that if there were to be issues, is that something that the JIF would cover?
Yeah, that's my understanding. I mean, I think I see a nodding. The, when I, when the, when the, my favorite spray ground project emerged, that was one of my first questions to the JIF. And they said they would cover it. They'd have to make sure certain rules were in, you know, they would give us some guidelines for how it should operate. And we'd have to comply with those in order to be covered fully. So we have to understand for a skate park, which admittedly might have more injury-prone component than maybe a spray ground. However, on the maintenance front, I tend to think it might be more manageable on those lines. But what the, where maintenance and liability come together, I think are might be concerns. Like if there's a, something pulls apart on one of the jumps and somebody gets hurt or leave responsibility. And we have to understand how that all works. But again, enough of our neighbors have done various forms of skate parks, I would assume there's.
Is that the skate park by Walmart?
I haven't been there, Tara. I'm not sure.
Tara, that you were.
Edison's skate park is right in the municipal complex, right in front of the police department.
Oh, I haven't been there in a long time. I didn't know that. Okay.
Okay, I didn't know that either.
And I understand there's a small one in New Brunswick as well.
Oh, I didn't know about that one. But it's right in front of the police department over near your center.
Sorry, Tara. Ed, do you have anything else that you would want to add about the conversation on skate parks?
Well, clearly, there would be liability insurance. Princeton built a wonderful skate park about five, six years ago, all concrete. I don't think there's much maintenance with it, but I don't know. And it is covered by their liability insurance. I don't know what it did to the premium, because it's pretty, I go down there once in a while. It's not far from the office. It's pretty risky business, watching these kids doing the flips and so on. But you clear, it's clearly covered by the JIF and our general liability insurance. The matter, the question would be, what would the premium bump be? And you just have to find out. And Princeton's taken care of by their public works.
Okay, thank you. All right then, does anyone have anything to report on any of their goals? Oh, Josh?
So that said, I just wanted to see if we could bring, you know, it to a resolution. Would the council be willing to move forward with having resolutions specifically about the site? That we agree on the sighting of the park? I think that's the initial piece, which, whether it be the Splash Park or other projects, until we make that type of decision, it's hard to move forward. And so I just wanted to, again, see, is that something that we would be willing to do?
Phil, you have your hand up.
A quick question, Josh. When you talk about citing, you just mean locating it at Carcy Park? Not, you know, 16 millimeters at the north corner, you know, and 100 feet south? You're literally just talking about it being there?
Yes.
Okay.
And to clarify one point, I missed just on Josh, on your behalf. My understanding is we, in part, we're talking about that large area where there used to be, there's a concrete pad and not necessarily removing the playground components that are there already. I just, I don't think that was your intention.
It's the concrete fenced-in area currently there.
Maybe, might have to go beyond that a little to accommodate the, whatever this ends up being. But I didn't want anybody to think we're taking over the entire site for this.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, Josh, do you have? Okay, Josh, do you have the answer to your question?
I don't know. Does everybody agree? Is that something that?
I agree.
You know.
I mean.
Is that, is that something we could have in a, in a, uh, in a short resolution for, uh, make a consent agenda?
Why not?
Yes. Okay.
Thank.
I think you got your answer, Josh.
Yes.
Okay. All right then, um, anybody have anything they want to report on or get about their goals? Okay. In that case, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Good evening, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Everyone.
Thank you.